"The Black Sea, the bright light of the sea. The autumn season fights, in Sotia, in love. Yachts strive far beyond the horizon. Time to say goodbye, the park of seasons. Only Sotia, the weather, and the sea, beautiful weather, must be seen."
"Could you include some scheduling and maybe some positive things rather than just looking to save money or something like that? But I'll update you on all of these things that I'm looking for."
"Thank you, Phil." "One of the things that Phil and I, he didn't mention, but Phil and I, we've held our third meeting, negotiating meeting with the CSEA, and that's going well. I think all of the requests are on the table now, and now we just have to sort through them and come up with some common ground. The other item is the Joint Economic Development Initiative, the JDI Committee chaired by Phil Dropkin. There are two or three things that the committee is working on. If any of these things come to fruition, it'll be a nice change for the community of Goshen. I won't say any more than that because every time you think something might happen, it doesn't happen. But the very fact that we have two or three juicy things that are being bandied around says that the committee is working well and making progress. Because sooner or later, something will materialize." "Okay. Under Old Business, Dennis, would you lead us through a resolution to modify the Town of Ocean Police Service policy for us?"
"Yeah, what the Board has in its package, and I think there's copies available for the general public on the table in front, is the existing Town of Ocean policy regarding tow service and with certain modifications. As the Board is aware, I think the public's aware, this has been discussed for, since last December. And the salient changes, we actually had typed in different type, if you will, than the prior policy, just so that the public and Board members could be aware of the modifications. And they're basically minimal, but they first appears on page two. It's our regular policy, still in effect. We don't want to get into rates, we don't want to get into the establishment of charges or fees. And we're increasing the minimum insurance requirements to a million dollars per occurrence, which is standard within the industry. And the major changes come on page three. And to summarize, we are doing away, as the Board is aware, based on your discussions, with the rotating selection list of eligible tow companies or entities. And what we're going to now is a system whereby there will still be a list of eligible and/or approved towing companies based upon insurance, equipment, established business, if you will. But there won't be any rotating list. They will be selected off of the approved list, if you will, at the discretion of the officer involved in the particular scene, with priorities to people established business-wise in Goshen. But again, depending on geographical location, it may not be the case. As we've talked many times, based upon the location of the town, the surrounding towns, we have two Goshen and their facilities. And those priorities are listed in B under the tow company list. But basically, what's happening or modification to now is increase in the insurance limits, and we're removing or eliminating the rotating list. Now, also to the Board's education, I don't know if you're aware, when this is, if it's effectively, if it's adopted, the police will be instructed accordingly with regards to precautionary measures and procedures or protocols to file. So they don't get into a situation where they're unduly, perhaps unknowingly, calling a certain company more than perhaps is fair. So the discretion will be imposed on the officers, but they'll be instructed accordingly as to their responsibility."
"I think the under, should I bring it to you, my battery's dead. The, under B, two owner requests for a specific tow agency. So I think that what you're, if there's a car broken down and the person is off the road, he or she can, the policeman say, here are the tow companies who you want."
"Correct. Obviously, the owner-"
"They'll be given the first choice."
"Absolutely. But before the officer would make a call, unless it's an absolute safety concern, or the, God forbid, the passenger or driver isn't incapacitated, yeah, the owner selection, and it'll be off the approved list. Again, to qualify for the approved list will be those things I indicated, insurance coverage and other personal data, which is set forth on the attachments, the later pages. You'll see the right to annual tow inspections, things of that nature. Again, to assure that the equipment that would be utilized or accessing the Town of Ocean's and proper registration forms, safety aspects, inspections, et cetera."
"Okay, would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolutions?
Oh, move."
"Is there a second discussion?"
"I'll second the discussion."
"Is there, is there a second? Okay. All right, Board, what comments or questions or concerns do you have?"
"I just had a question about the last page, I think I didn't get the other page. Scheduling talks about classification and it has heavy, larger tow vehicles, trucks. We have two different tow categories, right?"
"Yeah, that should not exist. Scheduling should not be part of the policy. Actually, that was to be, had been removed."
"Oh, okay."
"All right."
"But the names, the names are listed."
"That's under the old, old policy, which we would be replacing by this one."
"So in other words, it ends, our policy then ends with the last page, which talks about vehicle one registration?"
"That's correct. That's correct."
"I see."
"In other words, there is no list for heavy or light, let's call it, has to do with qualifications, truck size, the registration, the state approval."
"Right, but there is, there is going to be a list, and the list would be for individuals that are in the Town of Ocean."
"They may or may not."
"May or may not, okay."
"You know, up to them. In fact, in regards the size, there's language in the policy indicating, I can't lay my hands on it right now, but, yeah, list, list, tow companies, page three, subdivision A, list of eligible approved towing companies. Again, those that are eligible, those that have applied, those we've approved, shall be kept at the Town of Ocean Police Department. List shall be maintained for towing entities capable of towing normal passenger vehicles and light trucks and/or larger commercial-type vehicles. So you could get a situation where an entity could do light but not heavy, probably not the reverse, but you could get those situations. It depends, again, by the size, qualifications, inspection, certification from the state, et cetera."
"So then there is, there is essentially a list."
"But the difference, right, the difference, George, is the list will be all those who've applied to the town, who've been approved-
"Right."
"And want to engage in this service. That list could include people in the Town of Ocean and surrounding towns. Once the list is established, in no particular priority, could be alphabetized or otherwise, there is no rotational basis. That is, that forms a list from which the police officer or the owner, as this owner of the vehicle in the question, has the discretion or right, if you will, to select, choose, request, and the police on our end will obviously be instructed in..."
"But there is a priority given to-
"Yes."
"-tow companies within the Town of Ocean."
"Correct. Notice in C, tow calls from the towing list shall be made randomly, based upon criteria set forth in paragraph B supra. Paragraph B recites emergency needs at the towing scene, owner request, geographical location, and there is language also in the policy whereby preference will always be given to a town entity in this business located within the town. But unless there's geographical considerations which supersede it, as we talked about, you know, on the border of some other community."
"Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor, move him. Counselor McCallum?
Please, Mr.--
Counselor Lyons?
Aye.
Counselor Cazareño?
Aye.
Counselor Newell?
Aye.
Let me just reiterate for the public and for the Board appropriately. In sub, second paragraph of A, first consideration shall be given to tow service entities located and doing business within the Town of Ocean. In the event satisfactory tow services cannot be obtained in town because of physical, geographical location or otherwise, towing entities from other towns should may be accessed, if approved for inclusion on the tow list. Again, they have to apply and be passed on accordingly. Just to clarify."
"Okay. Thank you, Dennis."
"The motion, I believe, is made by Kenny."
"Yes."
"Now, just so the Board's aware, as a policy, this will be effective immediately and replace any existing prior. So we'll have to notify the towing companies that we're aware of that if we don't already have completed up-to-date information now, I assume we do, but if we don't, they're going to have to update as quickly as possible if they want to be considered as eligible."
"I think there are representatives of the tow companies that were on the list before on a rotating basis, right here, I think they're here tonight."
"All four over there?"
"Right. And if you're familiar with-
"All four are there, right?"
"Okay. And if you're familiar with that information we're going to need, it should be on file at the Town Clerk's office."
"Okay."
"All right. I apologize. Who was the second?"
"Phil." "Okay, the next item is to discuss proposed declaration of conservation easement between Orange and Rockland Utilities and the Town of Ocean, and authorize the supervisor to sign and saying at appropriate times. Dennis, you want to go through this declaration?"
"Yeah, basically, as the Board is aware, the Orange and Rockland project, if you will, has been conditionally approved at planning board level. We passed on an item Monday night. This is the subsequent or to be submitted declaration of conservation easement. You have that in front of you, and as you can see, it's not complete yet because it's in format which has not been completed because they don't have, if you will, all their final information either with regards to their recite plan, et cetera. So at the appropriate time, I assume, Orange and Rockland and the representatives will be submitting to us a signed declaration, at which time the supervisor, if you act affirmatively, would be authorized tonight to sign and execute that provided it's in substantial compliance with what's been submitted and approved by my law. Basically, what you have in front of you is our standard boilerplate declaration easement, which has been somewhat modified only to the specific attributes, if you will, of the Orange and Rockland project, which are incorporated in your copy. I've got them redlined in mine, but they're ministerial in nature, with the exception of one item, which would give them the right to place on the property underground facilities, with the condition naturally that any or surface areas would be restored to the pre-existing state. All right? Other than that, it's our standard easement declaration with all the safeguards which we've worked out over time, and it's, if you will, boilerplate."
"Now, so then item three on page five, additional covenants, that's been there all along."
"Bear with me. Item three-
"Yeah, additional covenants."
"On page five."
"Page five."
"Yes."
"Yeah, it's been there all, I thought it's..."
"Yes. Yeah, this is, if you remember, I know we've agonized over this because we've-
"When we did it on the left."
"Exactly. We've made a lot of revisions over time."
"Right."
"And this one is specifically tailored towards the Rockland, but again, many of those are minor items, as you know, from the PSC considerations to, again, what I just mentioned about the underground utility, possible relocation."
"So the only one then is the underground cable?"
"Of any major note."
"Okay."
"Yeah, the items or ones are just clarifications, elimination of indemnification aspects, you know, yeah, it's..."
"Before they proceed with an underground revision or whatever, do they have to come back to the planning board, or?"
"I would imagine they have to notify us. I defer to Alan on that. I don't know what their plans are."
"I don't know without seeing the example, but your regulations require site plan, certainly for overhead or underground."
"Right, or underground, okay."
"I don't know whether this is big enough to get to that stage."
"Right."
"We don't know what they're going to put."
"Right. This just contemplates that they would have that right if they felt so fit in terms of their mission, if you will. But by the same token, the surface areas, if it was to be accessed in that manner, it would have to be restored-
"Right."
"-to prior state."
"I understand that. My concern is if they want to build a whole facility underground for something and stuff."
"They'd have to come up. A minor item, yeah."
"They have part of that underground service on the program."
"Yeah, yeah, that's fine."
"I would think." "Yeah, I would prefer it, but that's my own opinion."
"Well, no, I think that's why it's a conservation easement, but..."
"I'm sorry."
"I don't think we can build on the area of the conservation easement at all."
"I don't believe so either."
"Even underground."
"In any manner."
"Well, we put in here that you can, in the event that you had to or whatever. I don't know who would have approved that."
"I think it's only in the event it's necessary for us to fulfill our obligation-
"Right."
"-to the customers."
"Yes."
"Correct."
"That's the quality."
"Otherwise, it's not contemplated, Dennis."
"That's why you would do it, probably, or isn't it? Yes."
"Okay, okay, okay." "I have a concern that I want to address, and that was, as you were saying, Doug, this is the boilerplate. And on page five, and, you know, we've discussed this many times, because we've had a number of conservation easements, this particular conservation easement, though, I think is a little bit different than the ones that we have come up to at this particular point. And it talks about, you know, the reserved rights being, and that anything prior to that that is specifically laid out there, you cannot do. But it reserves the right for anything that is not laid out there, that they can do it. And the one that was most troublesome to me in was on page six, where it says engaging in and permitting guests to engage in passive recreational use of the conserve premises. That, I don't think should be in there."
"No, that was, that was the one we had, the boilerplate one for where that was."
"The walk-throughs out on Gibson Road."
"Right, right."
"Are we talking about what is permitted or prohibited?"
"Prohibited. Oh, no, permitted."
"Permitted."
"Right, and that's what I want struck."
"I think it is prohibited."
"Yes." "No, it is not, according to this boilerplate conservation easement, it is not prohibited."
"Well, what this is, Alan, we took a, this Board spent on a conservation easement for another customer, for another applicant, and what you were pointing out, in that particular case, where they owned the land, they wanted to be able to, their grandchildren or whatever, play on it, so, so, so. So that really is pertinent years, and that something was overlooked on this, should be coming out."
"Well, I wouldn't say it's overlooked. It has to be taken on a case-by-case basis, okay? Now, let me just read it so Alan is aware. The reserved rights, the grantor, Orange and Rockland in this instance, reserves to itself and its personal reps, heirs, successors, and signs. All rights accruing from their ownership of the conserve premises, including the right to engage in or permit or invite others to engage in all uses of conserve premises that are not expressly prohibited herein and are not inconsistent with the purpose of this conservation easement, including, and the salient part is, engaging in and permitting guests to engage in passive recreational use of the conserve premises. What we found in the past were that some grantors wanted the right to have their property crossed with walking paths, bike paths, or whatever, walking, probably a more appropriate example, of a passive nature, and there was some concern on the Board's part that you really didn't want to encourage that type of activity on the conservation easement area. That's a permitted activity now, unless you want to strike it."
"Well, well, go ahead, Alan."
"It's my recollection, and I don't, I can't say that it's a very clear one, that Orange and Rockland did not want this included."
"I should think they would not."
"But I have to, I have to speak to my colleagues in the company to make sure that that's the case. I don't, I don't think they want this, but I'm not sure."
"Okay. However, that is the case. That is not going to be permitted, whether they wanted to..."
"No, just the opposite. They would allow them at their discretion to permit it."
"I'd say, and the case is, we're not going to allow it."
"That's something different, right. Okay, that's something different."
"Whether they say we should strike it out or not, we're striking it, we're not going to allow it, so whether we get, only because-
"Whether you want it or not."
"Before we get into a contest."
"Oh, no, it's not a contest."
"Everything can be a contest, of course. I'm not looking for a contest.
No."
"I want to find out whether we are on the same page with you, if we are, forget about it."
"Well, let's do this. Why don't you find out, and I think now and in the next work session, we'll figure it out, and we'll do it then."
"We can. We can. I just, I'm assuming, again, I have the advantage, I have the document in front of me, I know Alan hasn't seen it, but again, this was worked out with your offices, so I assume this has been reviewed by them."
"That's why I'm perplexed, because I thought it was prohibited-
"Yeah."
"-in the document."
"No, the language is not the clearest, but as I just read, it's permitted."
"I'll find out."
"Yeah. No problem. What you do, Alan, is three, one, triple I.
Three, one, triple I.
Three, one, in fairness, B, triple I. Three, one, B, triple I on page six."
"All right. Okay. So we will postpone this to the next work session. They're not going to, they're not going to do anything with intent on any-
"In fact, just so the Board and the public and Alan also know, what we were doing tonight is you were just going to, if you were acting firmly, you were just going to authorize the supervisor to sign this, when it was submitted in proper form, signed, et cetera. It hasn't been, it's, it was a preemptory motion, so it's not a question you could do like."
"We don't know what to do, because, well, I mean, I think that you get clarification, we'll come back, we'll discuss again."
"Right, because right now, you're going to permit it. You know, unless you vote otherwise or vote to strike and/or depending on our decision. It could be a change."
"We're in no hurry to get out, I mean, are we? No hurry at all."
"I don't, no."
"No hurry at all."
"No, that's what I'm saying, yeah."
"Okay, okay, okay." "And there's no motive made in this, right?"
"I thought we were..."
"No, I would be in a hurry if it was clear. Not clear."
"Yeah. We had, I mean, this stemmed from an instance where there was an easement behind residential property, which gave the people who were giving this conservation easement the right to come and do falconing and everything else, and the people who owned the property would not be permitted to go on their property because of the conservation easement, and that's, we're more protecting your people than, it's more of a protect-
"Is this the only issue at all?"
"To my knowledge, yes. Yes, absolutely the only issue. Because the only other major one that could have been would be in those underground tills, considering the main concern."
"Right. We're going to give you a copy of this, you take it, look at it, and call your client for your death."
"Yeah, I apologize. You should have this from Kelly Norton."
"I think I have it, but I didn't bring it to the meeting."
"I understand, I understand."
"Do you want one?"
"Oh, you don't, you don't."
"I will." "I'll take it." "We have it."
"Just so the Board understands where this germinated from, was Monday night when we did the PSC modifications. Alan inquired as to what the status of this was, and not that it was going to get lost, we'd do it eventually future time. There was a concern timeline that it might come in in between meetings, whatever the case might be."
"And we wanted to get it going, get it passed, and move on to the next step, so."
"Right. All righty. Time's on our side. All right, the next one is, would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes work session of January 22nd and February 11th, 2013, and the regular meetings of January 10th and February 14th, 2013?
Oh, move.
Second. Any additions are correct to the minutes?
"Yeah, I have two. One on the 22nd, and two on the, I don't, and one on January 10th. I'll pass the motion to the Board, and I'll highlight it, so.
Okay.
That's all I have."
"Okay. All payers say aye?
Aye."
"Aye, motion carried. The next one under New Business. We have a request by New York State Assemblyman William McCullough to consider passing a proposed resolution in support of Bill A. 88 and A. 84. Before you actually get into the letter that he had sent me, you can see where James Scovis, who is our Assemblyman from our district, he wrote to us and he said, "I just want to send a quick note that I have assigned, I have assigned as a sponsor in a particular bill, A. 88, and to request a number of town boards. A. 88 would require lending institutions to provide owner contact information of foreclosed buildings of two municipalities. Towns and villages can spend significant resources trying to track down owners and issue violators to keep the vacant property maintained, and this bill would help facilitate this process. Here's the bill in full, if you're interested." Now, we have had this problem in the Town of Ocean. We have had frozen pipes in homes, no one living there, they abandoned them, and when we found the water was melting and coming out the doors and whatnot, it took us some period of time before we could get in contact with someone who's responsible for the building. So this proposed legislation is contained within the next package, and you can see from the, go back to the resolution, says the final resolution was adopted by the Town of Board, Town of Ocean, so forth, so on. We would have to fill that in, but if you look at, whereas the vacant abandoned foreclosed homes and structures have proliferated throughout New York State over the past five years, which is true, vacant structures that are not maintained for months at a time degrade and depreciate the value of the vacant structure, as well the value of the surrounding properties, which is true. Lending institutions that hold mortgages on said vacant structures do not always provide contract, contact information of a responsible party. That's really true, and so forth. And so it says the Board supports the passage of these bills. So would someone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So move.
"Second." "Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Cazareño?
Aye.
Counselor Lyons?
Aye.
Counselor Newell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Yeah, it is a good bill.
Yes.
"The next one, just as a reminder, the Mid Hudson St. Patrick's Day parade is going to be held on Sunday, March 10th, 2013, here in Goshen. The queue up for those who are going to be marching to praise at 1:00 over on Erie Street nearby the county building, and then we'll step off at 2:00." Would someone like to make a motion to authorize a supervisor to pay a county's payable check run for February 21st, 2013, amounting to $472,463.48."
"So move. Second."
"Any discussion? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now open for approvals at the floor of anything that anybody would like to talk about."
"Anything?"
"Anything."
"I'd like to talk about the tow policy."
"Excuse me, Alan, you're going to get a mic from Dennis, please. That's a social, here's your phone."
"I'd like to talk about the tow policy that you just adopted. There are two words that I have issued, one that's there and one that's missing. In sub-paragraph C of tow company lists, it reads, 'Tow calls from the towing list shall be made randomly, based upon criteria set forth in B.' I don't understand what randomly adds to the sentence. I think it should read, 'Shall be made based only upon the criteria set forth in paragraph B,' not randomly."
"Alex, you have any comment on that?"
"No, I, semantics, I have no problem with the suggested change. Randomly is meant to indicate that it's not a rotational list where you would take the top and move on down as listed. It's random in terms of selection off that list, in this instance by, obviously, an owner and/or a police officer. The fact that one may be listed above the other wouldn't make any difference. That's, that's, again, was the intent of the word randomly."
"Could you, could you just say again where it was?"
"Sub-paragraph C on the tow company list, page three."
"Oh, okay."
"First.
I think the word 'only' should be included, that that is the only basis upon which selection is made."
"Well, you see, the problem I have with that is, and I understand the only aspect, the only would be emergency needs, owner request, geographical location, but an individual looking at the list may be inclined to select the top, or start with the top and always go back to the top, that type of thing. And again, that's all I was trying to do. I have no pride of ownership, I'm just saying."
"Maybe policemen?"
"Possibly the policemen, yeah, or even a person who was given the list. You know, the tendency, human nature being what it is, is to go to the top and read down. And the emphasis is on the random procedure. There's no obligation."
"I see random can mean other things."
"As far as, yeah."
"In terms of choosing here, there, everywhere, and there's no rhyme or reason for it."
But it's, but then it does recite, Alan, based upon the criteria set forth in paragraph B, so it does limit it. It's random, but based on that criteria.
I think that the less discretion exists, the better, for everybody concerned. I think that the criteria, if it's appropriate criteria, should be the basis of the selection, period. That's one man's opinion.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not strong on it either way, other than, I suppose you could get into a real difficult, uh, measurement aspect, if a property or a car was disabled on, let's call it, the west side of Goshen, depending upon the distance between that location and that of the operating businesses. I know the ones I'm aware of are relatively close, but are not adjacent by any means, and, uh, I don't know. You may start to get splitting hairs in that regard, uh, definitional terms, distance markings, you know.
You might even want to add other criteria as time goes on.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, that's why, again, and I'm not trying, I'm not, Alan, as everybody knows, is probably one of the preeminent lawyers in the entire Hudson Valley. I'm not disagreeing with his thought process, I'm just trying to explain to you where I was coming from, in terms of the random nature. I'm talking about that gentleman in the second row.
I'm not the Alan, I'm not the...
No, no, that's why...
Is it on television?
Are you gonna give out his phone number?
I know.
Is that what you're gonna run an ad tomorrow?
No, no, and I mean, truly, Alan has been with us a long time.
A long time.
He's very accomplished, he's very knowledgeable in this area, so I take any suggestion as serious. I'm just, again, not arguing, I'm just discussing the import of the words.
What if I can make a comment? We've been working on this now for two months, actually going back to December.
Right.
And every time we turn over the rock, something else comes up. What I'd like to see us do is see us work this, see how it goes, and be open to coming back at a later time based on fact.
We'd like to listen.
And see how well it's doing and not doing. Otherwise, we're gonna be sitting here word spitting and changing and whatever, and we're never gonna get it done. I think the motivation was to take government out, give you less government and more individual preferences, and take government out of the equation, and that's really, and I think George had mentioned, less government and...
What do you mean by individual preferences?
Well, I'm talking about whoever. We'll take government, I shouldn't have even gone in first, just take government out of the equation, and, uh, leave it up to discretion on the safety issues of the police officer, on the, on the ones that's the individual. I'm gonna hand you a question, Alan, if you want to.
Listening.
Okay, and on the individuals, give them the choice of who they want to tell, and we'll give them the list and make them...
The closure of my eyes does not mean that my ears...
I don't say that. The movement of your mouth said to me that you were gonna talk in the middle.
Oh, no.
Never mind your eyes.
It was your mouth that was the problem.
It was his mouth that was the problem.
And I was about to say, I can tell, you can tell a lawyer.
Yes.
And I was telling the truth or not the truth. His lips are moving, so just be careful.
All right, folks, I appreciate your comments, but I think that we need to try this, we need to see how it works, and, uh, we'll modify it, we need to...
I do know. Okay. If you present the person like Mr. Kuplik said, with the same list every time, they're gonna pick the top. It's just human nature. Same with the police officer. I'm not saying that they play favorites, but they know whatever, and it's just that you have to give them some guidance, otherwise you're putting them as a, as a target to blame. And I don't want to yell at a police officer because the board decided they don't want to govern it, so we're gonna let them govern it.
Well, the board does not want to govern, that is...
We don't.
And, and the police do have responsibility to govern, and, uh, we will communicate in great detail that concern which you're just talking about, but the fact is, somebody's gonna have to decide who gets the tow job and who does not.
Right.
And we're gonna ask them to be as equitable and fair as possible after the, the client themselves has first crack at who they would like.
Right.
Alan, or, uh, Luke?
If I'm understanding this correctly, didn't Alan...
Excuse me, we gotta take that microphone, please.
Didn't Alan Faust tell you that they needed it a day by day?
Yes. He works for, he works for us.
Yes.
He works for us, we're coming up with a policy, and what I'm sharing tonight is, we will in fact train them on it, and this is what it's going to be.
But they don't have their own dispatcher, they rely on nine-one-one, and nine-one-one told them they need it for a day, not for in... I was told to you, I believe, Dennis, by...
Yeah, a number of times by the police, but I stand behind what the supervisor just indicated. They, you know, it's our police force, it's our policy, and then they will follow the protocol.
They have the responsibility for the safety issue, and that's what we're concerned about. We're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna get into the middle of we said, we said, they said. We're, we're, we're concerned about the safety of the people that are on these roads, and the police officer on the scene, they're the ones that have to make that determination as to what the situation is, and so, I mean, that's where we're coming from.
But...
Yeah.
Tom, I still don't answer the question, though, if the police department already told you, we can't operate on a one-on-one basis, nine-one-one won't allow it. So I don't understand, that's what was explained on January seventh, and as well. They need it on a per day.
Well, why don't you enlighten them so that they understand what you're talking about?
I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't think the board understands the truth.
Town, town of Goshen does not have their own dispatch, they rely on nine-one-one, where the village has their own dispatch. So if the officer says, I want this towing company to come on, that dispatch at the village will look at the column and say, okay, I want Chats or K Team, or whatever it might be. Nine-one-one doesn't want to operate like that. They need it on a per day, twenty-four hour call. That's what Alan Faust explained to Mr. Kuplik.
And what I explained...
That they don't have their own dispatcher.
No, once again, I don't want to get into your business operation. Alan Faust and the sergeant has been instructed on the scene, as the officers will be instructed, the protocols will be, once it's determined by the owner or by the policeman, that the notifications will go out, the calls will go out to the requested or specified or selected tow service.
Right.
Okay.
That's, that's good. You know, we're...
Like the right thing to do.
Yes, yes. That criteria, we're trying to be fair, we're trying to engage in those set protocol.
Yeah. Isn't that what it works? Dispatch, the cops come in on the scene, and he'll make the call.
Correct, absolutely correct.
Yeah, that's...
Right, it'll never get to nine-eleven, I'm just saying.
Okay, well, we're gonna try it, and, okay, one more.
Um, before you said about filling out the applications and getting it to the town clerk, what's the town police, which way do you want to go?
Clerk.
The clerk?
Clerk, and then the clerk will...
Or you're gonna say, no, please get it from the clerk?
Well, because we've turned it into the police before, and so I just wasn't sure who to turn it into now.
No, the only way to gain proper control of the current situation, for the same reasons we're discussing tonight, is start the town clerk, so everyone has an available record, you know, the officials, if you will, and then it'll be released to the police.
You know what, I mean, there's a lot of internal situations here, but I don't know other tow operators in the town of Goshen. I don't know if there are any others, I mean, I'm not, and if there are, that's not gonna prohibit them.
They're likely.
What, he's messing with me again. What did you say, Alan?
We're there.
Okay, well, if there are, I mean, that would not prohibit them from making application the same way. I mean, everyone can apply at this particular point. This is not a, just a two-party, uh, situation, and it shouldn't be.
That's what.
Take it easy.
There may be more than four.
You're going back again, you're losing ground here, Alan. Okay, any other comments?
What you're saying is everything's gotta get turned in to the town clerk.
Yes.
And then they're gonna, you guys gotta look over it too?
No, the town clerk will compile.
Start with your town clerk, and it'll go through the process.
And then it'll go to the sergeant.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other items relative to privileges before?
This all starts from when?
Effective, absolutely.
Immediately, I'll try and figure that out.
So I'm just warning the existing companies, if their information, as per those attached sheets, are in effect on file, they're fine. If they're not, they're not unapproved.
But Val doesn't have any of them on file, because we filed them with the police.
And the police have been instructed to bring them in. The police are these people's responsibility.
But did the police bring them in, so we don't have to...
I have no idea, I don't think it's in our police. The police have been instructed to cooperate if, in fact, this policy was put into effect. It's been put into effect, I expect the police department, first thing in the morning, if we're open tonight, I expect them here tonight. In fact, I'm surprised there's not some representative from the police department, but that's the way it works.
We will notify them.
I don't have a problem with that.
I didn't, no, that's what I'm just trying to make clear too.
Just so we understand.
Yeah, I think there's been confusion in the past where the police department have certain functions.
Alan's gonna call in the morning to make sure that they submit the applications that they have.
Right, they've already been notified, I just saw you were aware of it.
Right, I'm telling you.
Yeah, but they would be aware of it.
Follow up tomorrow morning, and there we go, yeah. Okay.
Would you, would you think it would be a good idea?
I'd say, good idea, grab that mic, yeah.
There you go.
And when a choice is made, there'd be a form filed with the department indicating the basis upon which the selection was made. You've got three criteria.
Part of the protocols, the police have been instructed, that, that, and we want to ratchet out, we just don't want an officer on a shift to be like, well, I picked this guy twenty-six times, you know, they have it on sight. That'll be a public record.
It should be a law with the rule that you have to...
Yeah, that'll be a public record.
Then when we visit him, we should find out.
All right, would someone like to make a motion, adjourn with the...
Is there, is there anybody else want to talk about the agenda? Mr. Ronald, you wait back there.
Any other comments?
And I just have pictures for the deer fence.
Well, step up.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's not on the agenda.
This is pertinent to the floor.
You can bring them up, but we're, okay, but we're, the, the, in terms of discussing it tonight, uh, we're gonna put that on the agenda when Mr. Howren, we said before, when he gets more information. So if you've got photographs of it, bring it on up.
Yeah, in fairness, as the board, yeah, as the board is aware, this is our official meeting, although your work sessions are official meetings also. The criminal practice has been, unless it's on the agenda, but yes, you can receive the information, and I would imagine you'd want to put it on your next work session, at which time there's...
Well, one of the questions I have for Mr. Howren, what has he done relative to finding